...in Tennessee are domestic violence related. Research shows that domestic violence is a root cause of other crimes such as mass shootings and gun violence. Whereas within the city of Chattanooga, we have experienced almost 2,000 domestic violence incidents so far this year, 2023. Whereas domestic violence is not always manifest as physical abuse, it's also any pattern of behaviors that attempts to control and intimidate a partner or family member through fear, manipulation, isolation, financial abuse, physical abuse, sexual abuse, stalking, mental abuse, and/or verbal abuse. The true physical and mental trauma is much deeper and can have long-lasting consequences emotionally, mentally, socially, spiritually, and physically, and may also include financial insecurity. Whereas as leaders in the community realize that family is the foundation of a safe and healthy community, and ending domestic violence requires a combined effort involving every part of our society, including law enforcement and other justice systems, to work together to hold offenders accountable and to protect and empower survivors and their children to create pathways to hope and safety. And whereas together with the Chattanooga Hamilton County Family Justice Center and their co-located partner organizations, there is help to hold offenders accountable and reduce recidivism while helping to ensure victim safety, justice, and healing. Whereas we honor the tremendous dedication of law enforcement, advocates, and service providers, honor the courage and resilience of survivors as we recommit ourselves to standing with them for safety, dignity, and justice. We dedicate ourselves to recreate a community where domestic violence is not tolerated, where survivors are supported, and where all people have an opportunity to thrive without fear of violence or abuse. Now, therefore, by the virtue of the authority vested in us, we do hereby proclaim October 2023 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and call on all citizens to know the power of "we" as one Chattanooga to observe and speak out against domestic violence, and support efforts of law enforcement, the justice system, advocates, service providers, health care providers, and the leadership of survivors to end domestic violence. And this comes from... the City of Chattanooga and the Chattanooga City Council. Regina, it's again a pleasure to give this to you. One of the things that many people may not know is if you have domestic violence in families, if a child is never touched, the mere fact that they're around it, they're victims of domestic violence, that's pretty sad. And then we wonder with that high a ratio why we have other violence in the community. It's something we really need to tackle every day. Regina, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Burris, and thank you to all of the council members that we have today. We are really blessed to live in this community and have the support of the city council, the mayor's office, supporting the Family Justice Center. We're a model throughout the country amongst hundreds and hundreds of family justice centers. This month, the theme for Domestic Violence Awareness Month is "Everyone Knows Someone." And basically, it's, we all know someone. It might be our sister, our brother, it could be our grandparents, our children. Domestic violence is a public health pandemic, is really what I would say quite often. I mean, Carol mentioned it's more than just physical violence, it includes threats, it includes issues around tactics where offenders gain power and control. Chattanooga Hamilton County, the Family Justice Center is creating change through a coordinated community response. I wanted to share some of the work that we've done this year. We hosted earlier this year fifty, over 50 agencies and hundreds of community advocates who created task forces through a coordinated community response around faith, mental health, homelessness, sexual assault, the justice system, substance abuse, abuse healthcare, youth, and underserved communities. And these task forces are very active with goals and initiatives that they've been working on. One of the task force did a clergy conference and had over 60 clergy and community leaders at that conference. We have, this month, we fed 125 officers and advocates in appreciation for lunch. We have our Youth and Underserved Task Force. We have a meeting this Saturday, this coming Saturday at Orchard Knob, where we're bringing in folks from the East Chattanooga area to talk about resources. And actually, Councilwoman Coonrod is going to be sharing at that event as well. So we're really excited about the work that the community is doing because that's where it's, that's where it has to happen. The community has to be engaged. In addition to that, next Friday on the 27th, we have our 7th Annual Domestic Violence Conference at the Family Justice Center. And then Midtown Connect, along with the Office of Community Health here at the City of Chattanooga, is hosting a Family Fun Fest. We're expecting 6,000 to 8,000 children to come through, and the city has really stepped up and is supporting that event through all the different departments. So we're very excited about that. Another initiative is our High Risk Intervention Team that we started this year. It is a multidisciplinary team that's made up of the Family Justice Center, the Partnership for Families, Children, and Adults, CPD, the Sheriff's Office, the District Attorney's Office, Legal Aid of East Tennessee, Child Protective Services, and Department of Probation and Parole. And that group meets on a regular basis and reviews high-risk cases where we have identified red flags that can increase the person's likelihood to be killed in a domestic violence relationship. It offers a comprehensive collaborative wraparound support system for survivors, and it holds offenders accountable through the different systems that are involved. Some of the highlights for this year, we served 827 people this past year, the year before that was 600. So we are continuing to see an increase. We had, through the collective group of the 12 agencies that work on site, we served over 7,000 people at the Family Justice Center this past year through all of our partners. We do surveys with our survivors that come through, and 99% of the survivors that come through the Family Justice Center reported that they felt they had increased safety and their ability to plan for safety, which is really important for people getting out. And the other thing, because we're so connected to the justice system, 94% felt like they had an increased knowledge of the justice system. So that's very important. The work that we're doing is impacting families, it's impacting the community at large, and we're very excited about that. We offer programs with, from assistance, referrals, and life-saving services every day, like connections to housing, shelter, basic necessities, and all those wraparound services that our partners help support us with. Everybody deserves to feel safe, especially in their home, and to live in a violent-free environment. It takes a village, and we are very thankful and honored to have partners and allies in our community that together we create an opportunity for lasting change, and we impact our community for safety. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, and my staff are here, and they're amazing and wonderful. Let me just mention that.
Thank you all for the work that you do. Thank you, Councilwoman Burris, for bringing...
Regina, thank you and your staff for coming tonight, most importantly, for the work that you do. I'm a big fan of the FJC, and I promote you everywhere I can, and the work that you're doing, unfortunately, you have to do it, but you have to do it. You know, on Friday, September 29th, I had the honor of joining some fabulous ladies up here at a luncheon for the Women's Fund of Greater Chattanooga. And it's not an event that I have gone to in the past, and I felt really compelled to do it. And I got to sit with Councilwoman Noel Dr. Burris and Madam Vice Chair Hill. And the most important part of that luncheon was the stories that were told by people I would have never imagined, from the outside, meeting them on the street, meeting them in the office. And it really changed, I think, how I look at things, and it really struck home the importance of the work that you all do. And I think that, and next year, I encourage anybody, if you get a chance, please go to this. You will walk away, hopefully, a much better person, and be aware of what is hiding sometimes behind a mask. And I just, I'm very grateful for the work that you do, and I want to express that. Thank you.
Okay, counsel, can I get a motion on our minutes?
So moved. Second.
All right, moving into our business, we have two ordinances and planning on final reading. We're going to take them separately. Madam Clerk, will you please read item A?
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part II, Chapter 38 zoning ordinance so as to rezonate an unaddressed property located in the 2800 Block of Dodge Avenue from N1 Manufacturing Zone to UGC Urban Journal Commercial Zone, subject to certain conditions.
Can I get a motion?
Madam Chair, move to approve on final reading. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all opposed? Motion passes. Item B.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part II, Chapter 38 zoning ordinance so as to rezonate 809 Dodge Avenue from R2 Residential Zone and C2 Convenience Commercial Zone to UGC Urban Journal Commercial Zone, subject to certain conditions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Due to some circumstances, and I believe additional conditions that may need still some work, I'd like to defer this item to next week, to October 24th.
In the form of a motion?
Motion.
Any comments, questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And motion passes to defer. Please read Public Works, item C.
An ordinance closing and abandoning an unopened right way west of and parallel to the 700 through 900 block of South Greenwood Avenue as detailed on the attachment, subject to certain conditions.
Can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinances on first reading, we have several planning items. Madam Clerk, item A, please.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part II, Chapter 38 zoning ordinance so as to rezonate 5468 Old Hickson Pike from O1 Office Zone and C2 Convenience Commercial Zone with conditions to C2 Convenience Commercial Zone, subject to certain conditions.
Do we have an applicant present? Opposition present? Councilman Smith?
Second.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item B, motion passes.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part II, Chapter 38 zoning ordinance so as to rezonate parts of properties located at 3320 and 3440 Lightfoot Mill Road from R2 Residential Zone to N1 Manufacturing Zone.
Applicant present? Thank you, I see an applicant. Do we have any opposition present? Hester, this is in your district, how would you like to proceed?
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Item C, please.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part II, Chapter 38 zoning ordinance so as to rezonate 1812 Hickory Valley Road from R1 Residential Zone to RTZ Residential Townhouse, Zero Lot Line Zone.
See applicant present? Is any opposition present? Councilwoman Burris, this is in your district?
Yes, and I've spoken to the applicant. Karen, the conditions are in the new version?
The four conditions have been prepared by the city attorney's office, and there is a draft ordinance with those conditions.
So, so what are we approving?
I believe that there would need to be an amendment to include the four conditions, and I can read those into the record if you need them.
So, Phil, this is already an amended version?
Yes, ma'am.
So is it, are we talking about an alternate version, or what are we talking about?
Currently, at least on the agenda, it looks like there is a 30-foot Type A landscape buffer along the western property line with evergreen trees spaced a maximum of 10 feet on center required. There's an additional amendment that would need to be added here on first reading.
Okay, and is there?
Though we have four additional conditions.
Okay. All right, I move to pass this, and I'm going to move an amendment.
Okay, can I get a, thank you. Would you like to move for the amendment now?
I would. And would you read it, please?
I will. The conditions are minimum four-foot-tall black aluminum decorative fence shall be installed along the right, the right-of-way of Hickory Valley Road, which terminates on either side of the proposed entrance road into a masonry stone or brick structure where the subdivision name is depicted. Fencing shall also have brickstone and/or masonry columns installed at a minimum spacing of 50 feet on center. Minimum two-inch caliper trees and minimum three-gallon shrubs shall be planted along the right-of-way of Hickory Valley Road. Trees shall be planted at a minimum of 20 feet on center, beginning 25 feet on either side from each edge of pavement of the entrance drive to the, of the development, excuse me, of the entrance drive to the development. A minimum of three shrubs shall be planted between the trees. Development shall have a common outdoor amenity area for the residents of this development, and a sidewalk shall be constructed along Hickory Valley Road as required by CDOT.
Thank you very much. These were all as a result of meetings with the community. I move the amendment.
Second.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve as amended?
We have to approve the amendments.
Vote on the amendment. Thank you, Ken, always. You'll be our parliamentarian forever. Okay, we will now vote on the motion to amend. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
Chair, I move, I move the action as amended.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to amend, to approve as amended passes. Item D, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part II, Chapter 38 zoning ordinance so as to rezonate part of an unaddressed property located in the 6000 Block of Highway 58 from R1 Residential Zone to C2 Convenience Commercial Zone, subject to certain conditions.
Madam Chairman, well, Councilwoman Burris, this is in your district.
It is. The applicant?
Present? Do we have any opposition present?
So they did as requested, Madam Chair, and they talked to all the people, met with the people involved. I have gotten notes. Everything's good to go, so I move to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions, counsel? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item E, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part II, Chapter 38 zoning ordinance so as to rezonate properties located at 2409, 2411, 2417, and an unaddressed parcel in the 2400 Block of East Main Street from C2 Convenience Commercial Zone to C3 Central Business Zone, subject to certain conditions.
Is the applicant present? Thank you. Is there any opposition present? Councilwoman Noel, this is in your district?
I move to approve.
Second. Have any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item F.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part II, Chapter 38 zoning ordinance, Article 16 Downtown Chattanooga Fund Base Code, Division 4 Downtown Core, Section 38702, DCX Commercial Misuse Zone, to add additional maximum permitted building heights.
Councilman Ledford.
Move to approve.
Comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item G, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part II, Chapter 16, Section 1659 through Section 1666, by the leading saying in their entirety and substituting in lieu thereof the following new sections as amended for the Police Advisory Review Committee.
Councilman Henderson.
Madam Chair, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir.
Can you confirm that this is version six that includes the changes that was requested at last week's Public Safety Committee meeting?
Yes, sir. This version includes the amendments that were approved last week here, and that was sent over to Nicole this afternoon.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
With that, I move approval.
Second.
Thank you. Councilwoman Burris.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to amend, and the amendment I would like is to have nine people appointed to alternate so that we will always have a quorum present for them to do their business.
Can I get a second? Motion fails for lack of a second.
Cool.
Do I have any other comments or questions about the motion on the floor? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I vote no.
No.
Two noes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving to resolutions, we have two resolutions under our council office business. Madam Clerk, will you please read both? We'll take them as a package.
Item A, a resolution confirming the appointment of Caroline Baker to the Animal Control Board for District 2 with the term beginning on October 18, 2023, and ending on October 17, 2026. Item B, a resolution authorizing the administrative for the Department of Economic Development to accept an award of $30,000 from the American Rescue Act, coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds for the continuation of the IMPACT program in Chattanooga District 7, which equates unemployed and underemployed participants without prior information technology IT experience with industry-recognized training and credentials that will lead to entry-level employment.
Councilman Ledford.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is in District 2 and District 7 respectively. Without objection, I will move to approve. Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Is Caroline Baker here tonight? Caroline, if you are watching, thank you very much for your service to our community on the Animal Control Board. Moving into economic development, we have four items. We will take them as a package unless I have any opposition to that from counsel, which I do not see. So we will take item C through F together, please, Madam Clerk.
Item C, a resolution authorizing the mayor his designate to enter into an agreement of ground lesser in substantially the form attached with Morgan Stanley, N.A., lender as an inducement to lender in making a loan to Harbor Hotel LLC, which will be secured in part by a fee and leasehold deed of trust and security agreement granted by tenant upon tenant's rights and interest under that certain ground lease dated April 3, 2008, by and between the City of Chattanooga as landlord and Harbor Hotel LLC as tenant. Item D, a resolution authorizing the mayor his designate to enter into a lease agreement with CMC Inc. in substantially the form attached for the use of lots 1, 2, 3, and 4, and the portion of lot 5 not in the floodway, with said lots being a portion of tax map number 167DE041 at 915 East 38th Street to be used as staging area for activities relating to the United States Environmental Protection Agency, South Side Chattanooga-led Superfund Site project for the term of five years with the option to renew for an additional term of five years for the annual rental $1. Item E, a resolution authorizing the mayor his designate to enter into a second agreement to exercise option to renew with the Forgotten Child Fund Inc. in substantially the form attached to lease approximately 19,506 square feet of warehouse space at 1815 East Main Street, identified as tax map number 156BD009, for an additional term of three months through January 31, 2024, for the rent of $1 per term. Item F, a resolution authorizing the mayor his designate to enter into a second agreement to exercise option to renew with the Forgotten Child Fund Inc. in substantially the form attached to lease approximately 1,142 square feet of office space at 1715 East Main Street, identified as tax map number 156BD011, for an additional term of three months through January 31, 2024, for the rent of $1 per term.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counsel, how do you want to proceed?
Move to approve.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Planning item G, please.
A resolution approving a special accessions permit for a residential plan unit development for property located at 614 Eli Road, subject to certain conditions.
Do I have the applicant present? Thank you. Do we have any opposition present? Councilman Ledford.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Clerk, will you please read the conditions on planning version two, to make sure we have those correct? While you're doing that, is the applicant okay with planning conditions on version two?
Yes, sir.
I have them, Madam Clerk, if you need me to. If you'd like them. Condition number one is a 10-foot Type C landscape buffer along the northern HUD perimeter between the development and the adjacent single-family properties, Hamilton County tax map numbers 1090D28, 1090D36, and 1090D037. And condition number two, a pedestrian access connecting both sides of the development across the creek drainage area shall be constructed. And with that, I move to approve. Second.
Thank you. John?
I have a copy for this, Madam Clerk, if you need it.
This is in my district, and I do thank the applicant and their, their representative for working with the community so well on this project and working with me. So that said, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Moving to police, Madam Clerk, let's take items H and I together.
Item H, a resolution authorizing the Chattanooga Police Department to apply and if awarded, except from the Office of Justice Program for the BJAFY23 National Public Safety Partnership Capacity Building Grant to be used to enhance training, prevention, intervention, and enforcement towards gun violence reduction, with the grant period beginning on October 1, 2023, and ending on September 30, 2025, in the amount of $500,000. Item I, a resolution authorizing Chattanooga Police Department to apply for and if awarded, except from the Office of Justice Program, a victim service state support service grant to be used for supplies, training, and travel, and assistance for individual victims, with a grant period of one year, beginning on July 1, 2023, and ending on June 30, 2024.
In the amount of $61,500.
Yes.
Councilman Henderson.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Parks and Outdoors, item J, please.
A resolution authorizing the administrative for the Department of Parks and Outdoors to apply for and if awarded, accept a one-time award from the United States Council of Mayors American Beverage Foundation for a childhood obesity prevention and environmental health and sustainability award in the amount of $175,000.
Move to approve. Second.
Thank you. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Public Works, item K, please.
A resolution authorizing the appointment of Adam Salas as a police, special police officer in honor for the City of Chattanooga and Chattanooga parking authority to do special duty as prescribed, under certain conditions.
Move to approve. Second.
Questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Move to purchase, purchase recommendations.
Good evening, counsel. We have four purchases on your list this evening, one of which we're asking to withdraw, and then the three purchases are recommended for approval. So I'll read the first one into the record, but we are requesting to withdraw the following purchase from the Facilities Division of Public Works. This is a new blanket contract for custodial services at the Family Justice Center. This will be a four-year agreement, not to exceed $65,000 per year. The award will go to Detail Experts as the best bid for the City of Chattanooga, and we are requesting to withdraw this one.
Move to approve and withdraw. Second.
Counsel, do we have any comments or questions about that request and motion to withdraw? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to withdraw passes.
Right, and the following three items are recommended for approval. Right, and the following three items are recommended for approval. First, from the Street Maintenance Division of Public Works, this is a year three renewal of a four-year contract. A 5% price increase was submitted at the time of the year three renewal by CWS Chattanooga Hauling DBA Capital Waste Services due to the increase in the cost of operations and transportation. The increase will be $18,500 for a year three total contract amount of $388,500. Next, from the Office of Community Health, this is a one-year extension of the contract with Charles Brown, Ph.D., at Tennessee State University for external program evaluation services. The total annual spend for the one-year extension will be $42,904. And last, from the Park Maintenance Division of Department of Parks and Outdoors, this is a blanket contract, annual spend increase request for Security Guard Services with SEI, Inc. This increased request is for $300,000 to bring the annual spend from $825,000 to $1,125,000 due to a price increase from the vendor and increased usage of the contract.
Thank you, Brooke. Councilwoman Burris?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, counsel. Comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
And we have one sole-source purchase to report this evening from the Street Maintenance Division of Public Works. This is a sole-source in the amount of $35,000 for a new blanket agreement for the purchase of ready rock concrete block retaining wall systems. Bradley Tank and Pipe LLC is the exclusive manufacturer and dealer of ready rock products in this area of Tennessee.
Thank you very much, Brooke.
Thank you.
All right, we will now move into committee reports. Councilman Henderson?
No report, Madam Chair.
Councilman Smith?
No report, Madam Chair.
Councilman Ledford?
If you'll allow me to say our thoughts and prayers are with Councilwoman Coonrod and her family this evening. And I also want to make sure that, Mr. Dooley, have we taken care of business tonight for your record-keeping? Okay, then we have approvals. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Hester?
We met today and I want to thank Park and Outdoors for the presentation on Unify and Montague Park. Thank you.
Councilwoman Noel?
No report.
Councilwoman Burris? No report. Thank you. I do not have a report either. That concludes the business of the Chattanooga City Council. We will now recognize persons who wish to address the council. Mr. Attorney, will you please read the rules?
Yes, ma'am. At the end of each council business meeting, the chair will recognize members of the public who wish to address the council. And here's the rules. Each speaker wishing to address the council can only be recognized up front at the microphone that is provided for that purpose. You can't have more than three minutes to speak and you can only address the council upon matters within their legislative and quasi-judicial authority and not upon matters which are not under their authority or regulated by other governmental bodies or agencies. Don't engage in any vulgar or obscene language or use the floor to personally attack or personally denigrate others. Address your comments to the council as a whole and not towards individual council members. And lastly, do not engage in disorderly conduct or disrupting a public meeting, which is prohibited under Tennessee law. Someone commits that offense if a person substantially obstructs or interferes with the meeting by physical action or verbal utterance with the intent to prevent or disrupt a lawful meeting or gathering. Having stated those rules, go ahead, Mr. Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Monty Bell, the homeless journalist, the gray-haired fox, man with a billion-dollar voice. This address, my new property. October, Domestic Violence Month. I don't know who to address this to. I know that the city attorney is not part of the city council, but I have a beautiful young lady from UTC that stole my book by the name of Christina McClure. She watched a lot of my videos, heard a lot of my audios throughout UTC over the 30 years that I've been a professional broadcast journalist. Mr. Attorney, I want to know how, after she steals my book and I get CPD and UTC to come to the scene of the crime at 7:44 Macaulay Avenue, just right up the street, across the street from the Salvation Army where my book was stolen there, how is it that your appointed counsel, W. Gerald Tittwell Jr. and friends, ends up representing Christina McClure? He's an all-purpose attorney. He's represented his wife against me. He's represented his sons against me. Even the federal judges have gotten involved in my business along with your appointment and I'm still entitled to $211,344,000 for your fraud. Let's go to why the fraud thing came up and the judge shopping. Monty Bell was president and founder of an agency known as the African-American Chamber of Commerce. First time that a young black man ever opened up a company of this nature in the United States of America. It was stolen by one of your former mayors and some city council folk. There's a man by the name of Tim Kelly. He and his dad, along with about 500 more corrupt businesses, were thrown out of my agency and you all charged me with a crime. He had me arrested here and put a hit out on me and my encapment and he's still here along with you. Did you tell your appointed police chief that they lost? Did you tell her that Sam Hudson quit on you, along with everybody else? Want to know how Christina McClure got legal aid service and she was a full-time employee at UTC? She stole my book. I got women homeless, beaten to death almost, and they don't know a doggone thing about legal aid service. In fact, you all took all the brochures from 727 East 11th Street.
Thank you, Mr. Bell.
$211,344,000. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Counsel, I don't see anyone else that would like to address us tonight?